All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Al, could you start us with roll call, please?
Here.
Excuse me. Benson.
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Mybomb? Present. Miner?
Miner, present.
Schram?
Here.
Weber?
Weber, here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Present.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
For those of you wondering where Stephanie's at, Mayor Moser is very busy with an archery tournament, an international archery tournament, and couldn't be here this evening, so I'm just filling in for her this evening.
Next, we have the approval of our minutes from the regular meeting of August 9th, 2021. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Is anyone opposed? Thank you. Next, we have some announcements, so I'm going to ask the retirement committee to come to the podium and share with us their news.
We are live streaming, so yeah, we need someone at the microphone.
All right, first of all, could we have Adam Haberman come up, please? Adam, in addition to his duties as a city employee, also has been in the volunteer department. How long, Adam? How long have you been on? 14 years. Takes a lot of dedication and time away from your family and your friends and leaving Christmas dinners and things of that nature, so we really appreciate what you've done for the city and what you've done for the citizens, the visitors of the community, and we want to present this to you as a token of our appreciation.
Bill, do you want to stand up here with us? We have a proclamation today for Bill Ziegler. So whereas William Bill Ziegler began his firefighting career on January 18th, 1993, whereas Bill retired on May 21st, 2021 after having served the city of Yankton as a firefighter for 28 years, and whereas Bill has contributed valuable time and attention to all affairs and interests of the fire department by serving in firefighter, captain, and second assistant chief roles, now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Stephanie Moser and my fellow members of the city commission and the city manager, Amy Leon, do hereby express their gratitude to Bill Ziegler.
I really don't know what to say. These guys are all my family, and as my daughter can say, she's kind of grown up with everybody, so it's just a family thing, and I'll miss the guys. Thank you very much.
Bill, I'm sure you have a lot of stories from over the years that you could share with us, but we very much appreciate your service to the community. Yeah, absolutely.
Dwayne, is there a way you can blacken the back screen? We love Chaplin Weber, but we would... Thank you. I think Brad Moser is going to get a picture of Mr. Ziegler and his family, and he'll share that with us. And I also have to say, I have never seen this group look this sharp before in their dress uniforms. I mean, what a great-looking group. I can see Chief Foot. Just a little bit sheepish looking there, but you guys look as professional as you are, and just thank you all for all that you do, and we have an outstanding group of volunteers. And Chum, no. Chum is part of them too, but why don't... We need to get you one of those uniforms. Thanks for everything you all do. Most of these women and men, the commission probably already knows, but they're not just volunteer fire department, on our volunteer fire department, they're involved in our community in so many other ways, and how humbling for us to just live and work among the people that are here to keep us safe and keep our families safe. So, thank you very much, and appreciate you all coming to our meeting.
On that note, yes, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go. Thanks again, Bill. All right, I will now turn it over to the city manager for the city manager's report.
We do have dress uniforms for our police department as well, who look equally as handsome and professional when they have those on. Okay, I've got a lot to talk about today. One of the things I want to talk to you about is to just express the success that the various archery tournaments and activities that are going on have had. The weather's helped us out, but also yours, your and my staff, the city staff, has done everything they can to help the NFAA be successful. You've also had a whole community come together, really, to drive folks to the airport, get them where they need to go, host events, give out awards, and they're still going. So, we've got, I think, at least another week here of exciting activities and events to help succeed with archery. We were fortunate enough to meet some Olympic medalists and visit with them, and their impression of Yankton was that, from other tournaments that they've been in and places they've traveled, was that everyone's just so nice and eager to help them, which I think is a really good, a good position and a good impression to leave upon people coming from all over the world, literally, so. More to come this week. Tomorrow evening, there is a draw party, which I don't have all the details on what that is, although my understanding is slots are drawn to determine shooting order, and the commission has been invited to this. It's between 5:00 and 7:00. There will be dinner served, and we have notified the press that, you know, there could potentially be a quorum, although no city business will be taking place there. So, it's not for any official action. So, you've all been invited to that, as well as many of our staff people who have helped folks put on this tournament. So, I just wanted to bring that forward to you and let the public know that there could be a potential quorum, and as I hear of more events and things that you're invited to, and when I have those details, I will share them with the commission. I'm going to ask, we're going to hear from Kyle later, but I'm going to ask him to come up to the podium now to tell us a little bit about one of his employees. Many of you know Tanner Hanson, who's our wastewater superintendent. He received a very prestigious award a couple of weeks ago, which there was some information in the commission information memorandum, but it is such a prestigious award that it deserves a little bit of public recognition, so I'm going to have Kyle tell you a little bit about that.
Good evening, Commissioner. Yeah, Tanner was awarded with the Five S Award at our annual water and wastewater conference here a couple of weeks ago. The award is for excellent service on our Water Environment Association Board. Tanner's basically worked his way up through the ranks on the executive board, from a board member all the way through presidency, and is now going into as past president. Tanner did an excellent job representing the city of Yankton and our community, and brought some new ideas to the board, and they've offered and asked him to stay on, back on the board. He did decide not to do that, but he is going to stay on as a volunteer for several things on the board, with some operator training and things like that. So, just, he did an excellent job, and they were pleased to have his service, and it's good to have a city of Yankton employee involved and do such a great job, so.
So, if you, and that's one thing Kyle did that didn't cost us thousands of dollars. So, if you see Tanner, tell him congratulations. It's an impressive, impressive thing for him to receive, so we appreciate that.
Kyle, I do have one question. What was the Five S? What did that stand for? I thought I read it, and I thought it was a pretty interesting name.
Yeah. Society, Santry Sludge Shoveler's Society, something like that. And it's, yeah, and it's, the award is meant to be very serious, but the presentation of the award is kind of fun, and that's one of the things, they have to repeat that three times in a row as fast as they can. So, they also have to wear a gold shovel for the night. If they get caught without it, or somebody steals it, they have to buy beverages. So, the presentation of the award is meant to be fun, but honestly, it's a very serious award, and it's only given out about once every two, three years, so, again, prestigious, but yes, there is some fun in the presentation of the award, so.
I hope you all had a nice time. Also, news from our police department. We have sworn in five new law enforcement officers. Marcus Urban, Robert Dooley, John Todd, Dylan Bolger, and Tanner Smith. So, we have a new recruit class of five individuals. One of them comes to us with some experience, so they will be a reciprocity person who will not require the full length of training in peer. The others will be taking turns going to peer and getting their training before being out on their own. So, a lot of training happening in our department. Five recruits is a lot, of course, at one time, but also pretty unheard of to be able to get five in this day and age, so I think that speaks to the caliper of the department that we have, as well as a thank you to you. I don't think we could have been as successful in recruiting had you not made the change to the wages in the police department that made that market adjustment. Maybe that was a year or so ago now, but I think that makes a big difference for recruiting. And so, we'll look forward to bringing them to you periodically as they go through their training for you to meet, so you can meet them here and not somewhere else, and you'll see them throughout the community as well. But a great group of folks, and we're happy to welcome them to the city of Yankton and to the Yankton Police Department, under the very capable leadership of Chief Foot. Kyle is disrupting our morning commute to school and to work with some valve replacement at Douglas, so if you are, if Douglas is in your route, then we can talk to Kyle about that. That'll be a couple of days, I think, where we're going to have a street closure there on Douglas. Also, a number of us, many of us, will be gone for a portion of next week. We have the annual South Dakota Municipal League Conference this year that's happening in Spearfish. It did not occur last year due to the pandemic, but they're going to give it a try this year in Spearfish, so there's many of us that are involved in our various associations for our professions, but also then at the board level itself. We have some great sessions coming up on cybersecurity, civility in our meetings, as well as connecting with our communities during crisis, such as weather crisis or like the pandemic, and mental health for municipal employees is also going to be a topic being discussed. So, we're excited about that. I've been nominated to serve as the vice president-elect, so what that means is if elected and if I'm, if you'll still keep me around, in a couple of years, I'll have a lot of responsibilities associated with the municipal league and the municipal league conference, and I will probably share power with some of those responsibilities, and all the department heads know what that means. So, just want to give a heads up, I'll let you know how that turns out, but happy to serve. I've been on the board of directors there for a number of years, and it's a really great thing, also gives Yankton a good voice at the table when it comes to the time of our state legislature. That's all I have to report, unless you have questions or direction for me, commissioners.
Any questions for the city manager?
I did have a comment that I want to put the spotlight back on Kyle and Tanner. I just want to thank them for such a great job and a great tour that they gave me, as they do the oncoming commissioners of the wastewater treatment plant. When you, when things leave your house, you kind of tend to just forget about them, but to see the science and to see exactly what they do and where all that waste goes, and the science of it was really neat, and I really, really appreciated that. So, thanks, guys.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll move on to public appearances. This is a time when members of the audience can come to the podium and address the commission about an item not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no movement, we will move on to the consent item agenda. Number one is establishing October 11th, 2021, is the date for the public hearing on the request for a special malt beverage on off sale retailers license for October 16th and October 30th from Backspace Brewing Company, LLC. This is for an event at 2000 Douglas, which is Memorial Park. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? All right, all's in favor, say aye. Is anyone opposed? Thank you. There is no old business tonight, so we proceed to new business. Number one is Consideration Memorandum 21-203 and Resolution 21-78 regarding a request by Harvest Halloween for special events parking ordinance, number 933, to be in place during the Harvest Halloween event. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number two under new business is Consideration Memorandum 21-199 and Resolution 21-77, a land lease agreement transfer of hangar number 38 from Rick Dougherty to Dos Lobos Aviation. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
Maybe question for Dave. We don't charge anything when there is a transfer of a lease in a situation like this. Essentially, no fees associated with this type of action.
We don't have a lease transfer fee at this point.
But Dave, considering the work that goes into preparing this kind of a document and for it to show up before the city commission, perhaps that's something we should consider going forward, not necessarily here tonight.
Dooley noted, Commissioner Mybomb?
Any other commission discussion? All right, would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number three under new business is Consideration Memorandum 21-197 recommending approval of the contract for group health insurance, dental insurance, and vision insurance for city employees. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, would you like to walk us and the public through the details of this?
I will, and I might also, if you have detailed questions, technical questions, have Todd Larson, who has been our head of our health insurance committee, help me out here. He's the one who wrote the very thorough, detailed memo for us this evening. As the commission knows, we provide health insurance benefit to our employees, to our full-time employees. At the same time, we want to make sure that we're being as fiscally responsible as we can in providing that. So, every year, we, you know, go out for a bid for health insurance, and last year, you'll remember, we switched to Health Partners because our rate with the Avera Health Plan was much higher than what Health Partners could offer. So, we did make that switch. You know, we've had, I would say, overall, a good relationship and a good experience with Health Partners. As we went out for bids for 2022, Avera Health Plan came back with a significant decrease, and Health Partners had an increase, quite a large increase for their health plan. So, again, we wanted to look at making sure we were being good stewards of the city funds, and this is for like plans, so I don't want to say exact same plans, but very like, similar plans. Within what Avera Health Plan is offering, they're also providing a health membership benefit, I guess, or wellness membership benefit for a single plan for Great Life. So, this doesn't include golf, but this would include their fitness facilities, and as you know, Yankton has those. One of them right now is we're affiliated with the Summit Activity Center, which is something that we're currently paying for in addition. So, this looks very good for us. I'm talking in general terms here, so I'm happy to talk specific numbers if you'd like, or have Todd help me do that, but the other thing that I wanted to mention is the Avera, part of the Avera quote was a lock-in of a rate for 2023 of 10%, which is very good, we feel, for a guaranteed lock-in. There are some strings to that, and the string is that we have to do some screening of a percentage of our employees have to go through some health screening in the first quarter in order to get that guarantee. We feel, the committee felt, and I feel, and in talking with other staff, that it's very important to, if we can lock in that rate, to lock in that rate, especially with these uncertain times during the pandemic and all the unknowns that can happen with a group insurance plan. And we also felt that, for many of us, it's just good knowledge to have. Some of us wouldn't maybe go get our cholesterol drawn, or wouldn't go, you know, maybe wouldn't do some of the things that are in these biometrics that the health plan is asking. So, for our own information, we would also like to have that as part of what they're providing. I am not one to say, you know, to force people to do things. I think people are in charge of their own health, by and large, should be in charge of their own health, and so one of the things we would like to do is develop some incentive to encourage people to do this, and so that is why there is a portion of your memo that indicates that, along with approving the various health plans, we would like to have a dollar amount reserved that we can use towards incentives to get our employees to go through this biometric screening, so that we can ensure that we have the lock-in rate. The amount of savings that we're going to have far, far exceeds anything that we would spend on incentives, but we just think it would be good to do a carrot rather than stick approach, in the sense that we've never required things of that nature before. We don't require a flu shot, et cetera, so that's where that piece of that comes in. So, if you have specific questions about the plans or the rates, happy to have a discussion about that as well.
What was the estimated savings by switching to Avera from the other health plan?
Todd, you might know that off the top of your head, but I wanted to say it was in the...
Dwayne can correct me too if I misspeak, but, so if you figure in that Health Partners was going to be a 15% increase, and the blended decrease for Avera is 4%, you know, a decrease of 4%, it was about a 19% difference, so I believe we were talking well over $200,000 difference in what would be paid out for premiums, might even been pushing $250,000.
There is some hassle and cost in switching, of course. I mean, there's, you know, Commissioner Benson can appreciate this. Lots of paperwork involved, and then we're still trying, we would love to just plug-and-play with UKG. We're not quite there yet, we're still building UKG, so there is some cost and staff time involved in switching. It's just, we really, this is just something we couldn't pass up in terms of switching over this year.
I'd like to talk about the biometric screening. So, is that going to happen onsite, or are employees going to have to go to their healthcare provider to follow through on that?
It'll be provided onsite, so other than the COVID year, where we didn't have anything onsite such as that, we have had in the past the same type of screenings that they are requiring to try us to get all, you know, 75% of our employees or whatever that is. So, it's not really anything new. It's the blood draw to look at glucose levels and triglycerides and cholesterol levels, those type of things, again, with heart rate and blood pressure, so not anything out of the ordinary. So, yes, they will come onsite for us. We normally would look at doing that in November, kind of as we do open enrollment, but with this situation, switching to Avera, Avera being the ones that'll come onsite and do this, we're going to wait and do our wellness clinic in January, February, so that way we're inside the timeline, and that'd be something that we will also start to talk to new employees about. And of course, if there's people that are gone and can't be there that day, we may send them to Avera or their health provider, or new employees, we probably will send to the clinic and this or Avera, and it'll start to be a part of the onboarding process, and so we're hoping we can get greater participation as we move forward through the years with even the younger one, younger, healthy employees that we're bringing on, so.
Currently, and I guess also included with the new plan, every employee gets a free annual physical included as part of the insurance as well. Is that right? as part of the insurance as well. Is that right?
I would assume so. Usually the preventative, such as getting a flu shot, is covered by insurance. I'm assuming the annual checkup. Now, if you go beyond, I don't know what a normal physical would entail, but I think if you have to get a little more detailed, then there's probably going to be some costs that get split.
I know the answer to that because today I had my annual physical. I'm healthy. But yes, I mean, typically, you know, if you want something above and beyond the certain standard level of care, then the health insurance may or may not cover it. But your annual physical slash wellness check is covered by insurance. Now, how many people take advantage of that? You know, we don't know that. When we've had the health clinics before, where we have the biometrics and some of the basic screenings, I wouldn't say, I would say they were just, there was a lukewarm response. But I think, you know, we have a couple reasons. First of all, I think everyone after last year is more keenly aware of their health. And secondly, we have a financial reason now that makes it really important for us to be responsible to the public to do that as well. So that's one of the reasons why we're, the committee and I, and are advocating that we take part in this.
Yeah, I can understand the perspective, I suppose, from the insurance company. 75% could easily be a fluid number. Once 2023 comes around, 2024 comes around, are we setting ourselves up for 95%? If you want to get a lower annual premium, 100%. Otherwise, you don't get $200,000 in savings, or whatever that might be. So I would caution us here to be okay with 75% of employees being required to follow through on this biometric testing. I know it's super simple, but at the same time, what we're talking about is a health insurance plan for employees that already includes a full-on physical where they can have the one-on-one with their, with their family doctor and take actionable steps right there on the spot, not necessarily having to open themselves up to whatever. I mean, I'm not saying there's privacy implications, but we're talking about bringing folks into, you know, the, into our office buildings to do biometric screenings. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. It's potentially a slippery slope, and I know it's only 75% now, but at what cost?
Yeah, we do, I mean, do the best we can to maintain privacy, so we have different stations. They're not all together at once. And then we also, you know, that information isn't shared with anyone except the employee, so we don't see that. The insurance provider sees it as a group. We don't see it individually. And yes, it's not, it's typically, I believe, nurses and even students that help with that. So it's not, shouldn't be misconstrued as a replacement of having that one-on-one with your physician. So your comments also make me think a lot about how we present it to the employees. It's going to make a big difference about how we, how they understand it, and that it's important still to, you know, go and do your physical annually and have that, have those conversations with your provider.
And again, I would just add that if 90, 95%, 100% of all city employees do end up wanting to take advantage of this, that's great. But if it comes back to us in a couple months' time, I suppose by April, that only half of the employees did it, or 40% of the employees did it, I'm okay with that too. If that means that we have to, you know, reevaluate who the healthcare provider is going to be in the next year. So my insight would just be to employees that if, if it comes back at 50%, we'll make it work, and we're going to make sure you get the best healthcare possible as a city employee. But consider taking advantage of the biometric screening.
Yeah, in general, you always find that it's a lot smaller percentage that actually go for annual physicals than you would think. And so I think this is a great opportunity because I know that these have saved lives in the past because they would have never gone to the doctor otherwise. So there's a, there's a great opportunity here. I do recommend, if you can, offer all your employees to be able to go to their own physician as a, as an easy option, along with having that convenience factor of someone onsite. Definitely would promote it both ways because both are good opportunities.
Just from my personal experience, the information you get from the biometric tests often feed into your annual wellness conversation. So that can actually be helpful tool, so you can look at it that way too. Any further commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
I'm an employee of Avera, so I'm going to abstain. But the motion passes, so thank you. Number four under new business, we're back to sludge. Consideration memorandum 21-205 regarding a bid award for sludge removal. The recommendation is to award it to Willard Schmidt for .0325 cents per gallon. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Roll call.
Mybaum. Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number five under new business is consideration memorandum 21-202 regarding approval to complete the state water plan application. And this would allow the city manager to execute the application. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Kyle, do you want to fill us in on what we're applying for?
Good evening, Commissioner. So technically, we're not applying for any funds yet, so I want to make sure we're clear on that. The application for the state water plan is really the first step. I'm going to apply for any SRF state revolving funds or any of the other environmental funds through D A N R. Make sure I get that right. You first have to be listed on the state water plan. What happened is here about a month ago, right at the end of August, there was some, some language that came out basically stating that there's potential to be a pretty good chunk of the American Rescue Plan funds potentially going to the D N R, D A N R, for some of those environmental funding. Now, again, that's, that's still up to what the legislators and governors decide to do with that money, but there is some potential for some pretty high levels of grant funds that we haven't seen in the past. So really, that kind of sped up the process of some of the projects that we had in that five-year plan, even a few years out beyond that. So we kind of put together a state water plan that really encompasses all those projects. A lot of unknowns yet. We don't know what that funding rate's going to be. We don't know how much of those funds are really going to go to D A N R, so we really don't know yet. So right now, we're really just putting in any project I think we may, we would maybe want to complete with substantial grant funds if they were available. We did have a presentation by Mr. Brules and Mr. Perkovich from the D A N R at our last conference here a couple weeks ago. The second-to-last slide stated, "Think big." The very last slide said, "But not too big." So that's the direction we've gotten. So there's not a lot of direction there. We're still putting together the numbers again. We only, this kind of came out and only gave us about a month to hit that October 1st deadline, the end of this week. So we're at about $115 million in projects from the state water plan. The big one's the wastewater treatment plant. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but applying for those funds would happen January 1st. The issue with that is we're still not going to know what funds are going to be available because the award would happen in March. And we're hoping by then that the legislative session would have determined where those funds are going. So the big one on the wastewater plan is, do we want to stay at the location we're at, retrofit that, $50 million? Again, these are very rough numbers. Or look at relocating east of town, five or six miles, and being that $100 million range. So again, this, the substantial amount of what we're putting in the state water is that $100 million potential to move the facility. So really, once we get more and more information from the state, we're going to have to start looking at that decision. So a decision that I kind of told you was a few years away yet, potentially is moving up rapidly. We can apply for those funds in January, January 1st, and always pull our application once we know what those funding rates are at. But that's kind of where we're at right now. So again, not a lot of, not a lot of good information I can give you other than we're putting in anything that we think's a real project. One of the things they did talk about is staying away from the projects. We do have to list alternatives for every project. And one of the things they did talk about is if you put in a $200 million project, but you have a $50 million alternative that does the same thing, of course, they're not going to fund the $200 million project. So we're just trying to get real projects with real numbers and get that information in our state water plan. So. Questions? Concerns?
There's no commission discussion? Then the audience like to address the commission on this item? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Al, roll call.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number six under new business is consideration memorandum 21-200 regarding proposal for professional services for the West Side Park concept plan with Stockwell engineers, and this would be in the amount of $32,250. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, or Todd, do you want to walk us through what this would entail? Or maybe Adam, whoever's best suited for it.
We, I mean, we all can play if you'd like. As you know, we talked about in the budget process a reinvention or revitalization of West Side Park, including some projects which are going to be funded by gifts, by private entity and by private individual. Additional trails, meditation garden, restroom upgrades, possibly lighting, irrigation, island improvements, bank stabilization, pedestrian bridge replacement, all those types of things. You know, we have concepts in our mind and ideas, but we certainly need the help of Stockwell to put that plan together for us, give us some options, and put together as well our specifications so that we can bid out the project. So that's basically what this contract is to help us get there so that we can move forward with this project in accordance with a timeframe where we can get the project done so that it meets the timeline of our, of our folks that are contributing to it, as well as so that we can get things done in concert with the removal of the buildings that will be taken to the Heritage Park area from, in the Mead Cultural Center, from their current location. So there are specific questions. We can talk about those, but we have confidence in Stockwell based on their past services that they've provided us, that they're the ones that we'd like to have help us with this as they always make everything that we, they put together of us look nice and professional and landscaped in sort of the keeping with the themes that we've started already at the Plaza and Long Douglas and the Aquatics Center.
So is anything excluded from the West Side Park master plan that was approved that we're, that we're seeing in this proposal here? Or is it everything, essentially?
Well, it's not everything. You know, one of the things that we hope in the future is to have some kind of a multi-season building, which can be utilized for, you know, perhaps renting, community space renting, or renting out for, for family functions, that type of thing. Maybe as well have some, maybe onsite partnership with, say, maybe Malt Marti or another entity to do some rentals and things like that. We also are going to investigate, you know, pickleball, as that's becoming more of an exciting and well-liked sport, and determine, you know, what can be done in that area, as well as skate, the skate park, whether that should be moved or removed. So there are some things that may end up being addendums or may not be included at all once Stockwell gets a little bit further into their investigation. So no, the answer, the short answer, I'm sorry, I could have given is no, it doesn't include everything in the master plan.
Are you able to talk about the, the, I guess not grant funding, but the donation funding? In our CIP, we've got half a million that's going to go towards West Side Park next year as part of our adopted budget as well. I think another $100,000 for probably this kind of work. So of that dollar amount that we were anticipating, what eventually do we think we may end up being responsible for percentage-wise?
Yeah, and I think the amount is higher than that now. I look at Dwayne because I thought he might remember off the top of his head, but he'll look that up while we're talking. The, the, one of the gifts, I believe, is in the amount of $200,000, and there'll be an announcement regarding that gift in the near future. The other gift, there hasn't been a precise amount given because they're working in concert with us and want to see what design Stockwell puts forward. But my understanding is it may be a sort of legacy-type gift where there may be some, some, it may be more than a one-time gift, if that makes sense.
Sure, I'm just, so then I'm curious if, similar, I suppose, to the model for the aquatics facility, would it be possible that as part of the final deliverable from Stockwell, that we'd be able to basically have an understanding of between grant funding and donations, here's how much we can, we can accomplish with those monies alone? Or at a matched level, or if we're, you know, wanting to think really big?
Yeah, I think by the time they have enough of their work done and cost estimate, harder cost estimates done, and we will have had enough conversations with our other donor, and we'll be able to tell the commission, you know, here are, here are the costs, but here are some alternatives. For this amount more, you might want to do this alternative. If you're only utilizing the grant funding, this is probably what you could do and what your priorities are. So we could certainly do that if the commission should feel differently at the time. One of the philosophies that we have had as a staff is that we should at least put in what is being gifted, and then if we can, you know, put in more to make more of a complete project, then, then we probably should. So not necessarily part of this grant project, or, excuse me, this project, but part of this overall development plan is also the fact that there will be, we believe we'll have grant funding for, from land-water conservation for the playground equipment. So that's kind of an added piece of this puzzle that will be included in this overall project, but not specifically in this contract.
So just to fill in the gap, the way we reflected the project in the budget and the capital improvement plan, and this is prior to any of the detailed discussions about engineering or design of the facility, is we did 1.5 million total project cost with $500,000 in donations.
Thank you, Dwayne.
In the discussion of the improvements to West Side Park, has there been any discussion about access to neighborhoods around the park, especially crossing to the, to the south of the park itself?
In terms of trail development?
No, in terms of just being able to cross the street safely, going from the neighborhood, the neighborhood which I live in to the south with, with children, then going over to West Side Park itself. There is, there is one crosswalk which is right in front of, more towards the, I guess, the north as you go towards the Avera parking lot. But to safely, I see this when I, as I drive by there, I do see the football players trying to cross the road. I, I just think that from that, from the neighborhood, from that side, the, I guess, the south side of, of the street there, there needs to be, I think, maybe something better. So, just as these discussions take place, and I fully support the project, I just think that there is, with, with the four-lane traffic there, it is not so easy for people to cross the street.
You're right about that. And there's, I can see three engineers right now in my line of sight, and, and I know Dave and Todd and I have talked about that. That's, there's some difficulty there with that conversation because as that's a state highway, they only allow so many crossings. Placement of that crossing has been a discussion, and probably will continue to be a discussion as Mount Marty develops more. So, I, I don't want to make any kind of a promise or, or even an expectation that there'll be something different, but I, that does continue to be a topic of discussion and understood that crossing that street really, no matter where you are accessing that park. Yeah, you could, there's, there's a lot of lucky ducks, and we hope we don't have an unlucky duck, but, ever, but it's tough. And even at the location, or even when those locations, if we had more of those locations, the speeds are high, and people come around that corner like, you know, Indy 500 sometimes. And so, yes, that's, that'll be, we'll definitely continue to consider that and, and see if there's anything that we can develop. And I know also Mount Marty and Avera have had that discussion as well.
Thanks.
Was there a conversation about naming rights as part of these donations?
Well, we didn't talk about naming rights for the park. That could be a discussion if our donor, or if an unknown donor, would like to have that conversation with us. We're always open for that. We have discussed recognition of the, of pieces that are being, I guess, donated or suggested. So, so each donor has a certain part of the project that they had an affinity for, would like to see. So, we haven't talked about naming the section of the park after those folks, but giving them, I guess, making a signage or giving it significance in, in understanding that there is a partnership there. So, a technical naming right, no. But that is open for discussion should those donors be interested. At that level, not for the park itself.
I just wonder if maybe we're a little too far along with $32,250 as part of a proposal for professional services, if we don't have even memorandums of understanding with the potential donors, and everything's just kind of, here's what we're thinking, here's what we're thinking. If, if the implication might be hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe even more than we're thinking right now that we may end up having to cough up to make this happen. I, I don't know where the, where the donors are at, if, if they're ready to, you know, proclaim themselves and what their hope, their dreams are for the Westside Park. But I still think that $32,250, and it's a pretty broad scope if we're just excluding a four-season building, and we don't know for sure, or we're not explaining to our constituents that, don't worry, we've got X amount that we're locked in for, from our valued donors.
I, I think where, where this will be helpful is determining the cost of those improvements. So, you know, when you're talking with potential donors about projects within the park, and you say, well, you know, based on our Google search, it might cost this for, you know, a piece of equipment or whatever. But that more detailed cost analysis you won't get without this agreement. At least, that's how I see it.
So, it's possible then that if the costs come in too high, that the donors could back out? And what we would be out then is the professional services that we'd be approving here tonight?
I think there's a chance of that. However, I think that probably more likely that the donors would scale back on what they would like to see their dollars go to. Both seem very committed to making their mark in Westside Park, a long-term mark in, in, in Westside Park. And, you know, donations, and it's such a tricky thing, right? And it's because it's people's personal wealth that they're giving, and you always want to be gracious at every, at every amount and every level. And you always want to try to do the best for whatever somebody's willing to give, and then also set realistic goals. And you want, it's kind of, I, I always feel like I'm dancing with someone who's never taken ballroom dancing whenever I talk about a gift, because I don't want to be too forward and make assumptions, and I don't want to appear like what they're wanting to give, we're not gracious for. So, it's kind of walking this line, going back and forth with somebody until you're at a point where you feel like, yep, we're ready to, you know, now we can promenade, and we can go out and say, this is what we're going to do, and this is what it's going to cost. But I think where we're at with those specific conversations is I know enough to know that these folks are going to give something. I'd like to give them more detail. I know Stockwell can get us good costs and good images for them to actually see what it is they might be investing in, because that's another big thing, too, is people want to see the thing that they're, that they're purchasing, or that their family name's going on, or their business name is going on, and have some conversation about that. And, you know, if that is a lot more of an investment than they thought they were going to make, sometimes, in my experience, the donor likes it so much that they say, well, I, I want to do more. Sometimes, just like what you're describing, the donor will say, no, that's way more than I thought, and we can either scale back, or we can't scale back, and then it would become your guys' decision whether or not we wanted to still move forward. So, it is, it is really not a science, especially when we haven't had the ability to give them anything to, to look at other than the things we found online to kind of suggest them, is a sort of what you're thinking, we can get a design put together. So, I apologize, I can't be too much more clear than that, but it's also sort of a, a new endeavor that we just embarked on, really, when we started with the Aquatics Center of these, you know, naming rights and legacy gifts. And we've done small things previously, but we're getting into where it's really directing our work based on, especially in our parks, based on what people are willing to contribute, where, where our focus comes. And so, we're not experts at it by any stretch of the imagination, but we're trying to be gracious, but yet also make sure their, their investments matched, at least matched with an investment of public dollars.
City Manager Leon, I, I would like to echo that sentiment, just going, having gone through the pool and fundraising for the Aquatics Center. I, I think it's especially important, once you see, when people see things on paper and actually they have a number, and then they can actually see something, it's more tangible, that sometimes they decide to give more than they originally thought they would, too, to add more to the project. So, I think it's a really good point.
You know, and, and fundamentally different in that you had a lot of money put up front from private donors that helped facilitate a lot of the conversations. And we're also talking about an aquatics facility that actually generates revenue for our city. It brings in people from, I mean, we, we got the report from, from our intern, folks who come into our community specifically for, for that attraction. And so, you know, I, I guess I go back to, just, just before I had stepped off the commission when the, when the master plan was coming together, it was always, it was always described as, you know, this is like a five, 10-year, let's just kind of think out loud and, you know, put something down on paper. And so, I guess essentially it worked in that we got some, some donors on board. But this is a, this is a fundamentally different investment compared to a pool where we know that we're going to be bringing in a lot of visitors, we're going to be encouraging economic development, we're going to get families from outside of our community coming specifically for that reason, not just, I know we're all on the same page with quality-of-life projects, but this still, I just feel is, it's fundamentally different, and it's great that the timeframe is moving up, but I don't think that means we need to necessarily cut any corners in order to, you know, see this happen all at once, I guess. Potentially at, at maybe a greater cost than we're willing to bite off.
I guess I see getting information would be the reason or the way to not cut a corner. It'd be that, that way you can explore, know exactly what it will cost, and then you have, you have data, and you have facts, and you can make the decision based on that.
I just think, for example, the, the Artesian well that services the pond there, until we get some underground analysis of what's actually going on there, we have no idea what the cost or the scope of that project will be. So, that's just one example that we are dealing with in that park.
Yeah, and, and the way this project grew, maybe that helps to give a little history, is the donors, you know, we have the master plan as, as something in our comp, in our city strategic plan, but also we've done the master plan for Westside Park as something folks wanted to focus on in the future. We have some donors approach, and the things that they would like to see occur would be really poor investments without some of the plumbing and dirt work and some of the, you know, we could put some lipstick on, but it's a lot better to, you know, really do an overhaul. So, long-term. So, that's kind of how it grew a little bit. And then we started talking about things like, well, are we going to make this investment without irrigation? Well, how much would that cost? Well, in the master plan, it talks about moving the skate park. Well, we should look at that, and is this the right time? And, and to have some pieces and information to, to go off of. So, you know, whether or not ultimately the commission moves forward with awarding a bid for a contract or a bid for a project, real staff will be coming to you at some point saying, the pond's in trouble, the park's looking like it's seen, got some age, and we need to do something to maintain it if we're still going to use it as a, as a, as a park for, for our citizens.
I guess I just have to say that we, as commissioners in the city, need to take the lead on this and provide the leadership because we have a fairly vetted donation pool for this project. And I'd hate to see us potentially lose those donors by not providing enough of a big-picture information for this project and lose potentially half a million dollars of money that somebody is willing to gift to us for this great project. So, I think we have to take the risk in that it may not amount to anything because it's, in my mind, it's a mitigated risk by how far these donors have been vetted to this point.
Was it 200,000 or half a million?
I may be still concerned.
We have one contribution of 200,000 that we know about as a, as a hard number. The other donor, we don't have a hard number on, and I anticipate there may be more donations as a part of this project as well as we have more information and talk about it more. My understanding was, the last time we spoke about this was the direction, was that there might be other entities that would want to participate in this project as well, and that we should make that known in the community so others could participate if this is something that's of value to them. And I do know one, one other conversation, which hasn't been a serious one yet, but a conversation of, of an individual that may also choose to contribute to the project, so.
And I guess in my mind, Tony, if I did miss, I guess I maybe misspoke on the, the amount, but it's still, I would hate to see us lose even $250,000 of, of a naming rights donation for something that would make the, that park be a much better park for the community.
Yep, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to lose it either. I, I guess probably what it comes down to is just, I, I wish that through this process, especially after what we went through with the Dive-In Yankton effort, having, you know, built a pretty awesome aquatics facility, this, at this point in time, it doesn't feel as transparent as it could be to, you know, to our citizens who are eventually going to have to, you know, hear us approve a lot of money to make this happen. So, that's, I guess, my final comment. I just, I, it just feels very, very different than the Dive-In Yankton experience, which I think was top-notch. If I were to give that an A+, right now, my comfort level is a C+.
So, just to clarify, I did misspeak, and the way it is in the CIP is 1.5 and 300,000 in donations. Sorry about that, that was my error.
Any more commission discussion? Nope. All right, would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Number seven under new business is consideration memorandum 21-201 regarding city-owned Broadway Avenue frontage property adjacent to the Yankton City Cemetery. And this would be in the, on the east side of the 2,500 and 2,600 blocks of Broadway Avenue. And tonight's discussion is regarding whether we would like to proceed with a request for proposals and what conditions and covenants we would like to include if we do move forward. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
I think Dave Mingle would like to add a little bit, since there's a little bit of information since our last meeting to share. Hi, Dave.
Hi. So, in, in your packet is, is again, the memorandum explaining the attached draft, RFP and covenants. There, there are a couple of differences in, in this example than what we've seen in, in properties in the past when we've gone through the RFP process to seek out a developer. We are also, have been made aware of past Cemetery Association possible actions that may or may not influence the direction, I shouldn't say the direction, that may or may not influence the timeline that, that this can be on, because there may be the need for a couple of additional steps in this process. We have not seen anything to this point that would change the direction that the, the commission has, has taken so far as far as potentially making this property available. But we have found or heard of some information that may mean there's a couple of extra steps. But I can try and answer any more specific questions about that if you want to, but I would just say that the, the plan at this point, if you so choose, based on your, your direction from the last meeting, would be to continue moving forward, but just plan on it taking a, a couple of extra meetings to, to get through the process. And that may, in fact, not be the case, but we're, we continue to do the title research and investigation necessary to, to fully vet that consideration. With that, I'll say that the covenant, or, excuse me, the RFP is fairly similar to what we've seen with past properties that the, the city has accepted proposals on, with, with a couple of small differences. One would be essentially just disclosing a, a sale price that may or may not be based on an appraised value. And, and, you know, it is Broadway frontage property, so we can, you know, we have appraised value information available, but that number may not be what the commission's interested in seeing. So, that, that is a number the, the commission could discuss, and that would be in, in the sale process where that blank is in, in the proposed general provisions. The rest of that document is very specific about what we'd require from somebody making a proposal as far as what the eventual site would like to look at, would like to, what you'd like the site to look like. And it also refers to the covenants, which are the more specific piece of the document that you should probably take a little bit more detailed look at. And specifically, number two, as we discussed last time, rather than try to figure out what you want to see on the site, I'd recommend keeping as open a mind as possible and just... what you want to see on the site, I'd recommend keeping as open a mind as possible, and just more specifically identifying what you maybe don't want to see on the site, and then let whatever proposal comes forward, come forward, and, you know, there's probably ideas out there that we're not thinking of while we're right here. So, I, so specific things that I just put down for discussion to maybe exclude from location, from that location, if the proposal moves forward, our self-storage facilities, marijuana dispensaries, type A dance licenses, gas stations, convenience stores, truck stops, single-family residential occupancies or nontaxable occupancies, those are kind of the easy ones to pick out and say, "Yeah, none of those would really make sense for Broadway frontage." If you have ideas for additional bullet points to be added to that, now would be the time, if they come to mind, to bring them up, or you could let us know those later down the line, and they could be included in the next draft. The other thing that's different in this document than what we've seen in the past is actually, when you get to number five, the right to repurchase, typically our clawback provision, which is performance-based, if they, if a developer doesn't build a site out, or portions of a site out in X amount of time, the city reserves the right to buy back the property for the initial purchase price. In other words, there would not be any ability for the developer to profit simply from holding the property and then having the city claw it back. In this case, the thought was to provide a little bit more of an incentive to act quickly and have a, have proposers or developers be really serious about their development. And I'm not going to call it a penalty clause, let's, let's call it an incentive, and include in the clause where the actual clawback would be for only 75% of what the initial purchase price was, so that there would actually be a financial consequences for not performing as outlined in any proposal submitted. We can talk about a number of other details in the two documents, but at this point, I'd be happy to hear any suggestions you might have for edits as we continue to move forward in the discussion.
Well, as far as an increased timeline, I guess I'm, I'm fine with that. I've spoke about this before, I would like this to be available to everyone. I'm worried of shoving this through in a, in a tight timeline and not allowing everyone a chance to take a look at this piece of property. We only have this, I mean, this is a, it's a heck of a piece of property, and I want to make sure that whatever gets put into there is going to be the best possible scenario for the, for the town. And I think that might take some time to fill it. It's been vacant forever. I don't see any reason for us to have to, have to shove it through and expect to try to get it done, you know, within, you know, by the end of the year, or any of those things. I think it's important, people have, the general public, everyone, has, has just found out that this is potentially open, and I want to make sure that the general public, everyone, has an opportunity to think about its potential or, you know, a potential development, because I don't think everyone has been thinking that that land was going to be available. So, I guess I don't mind it taking a little bit longer, just so, you know, in transparency speak, so that everyone knows that it is available, and we'd love to see a, you know, a fantastic development there.
And just so I'm, just because I'm new, and this is fairly new to me with all this real estate stuff, so, just want to make sure, especially the people that are citizens that are out watching on YouTube or that pick this up and look at it, we are asking for a request for proposal, that potentially that it will go up for sale, and essentially, if we get proposals that we don't like for really whatever reason, or what is stipulated here, that we don't have to sell it. Correct?
Correct. That was one of the stipulations that we heard loud and clear from the commission during the last discussion, and that is that the RFP needs to make very clear that any and all proposals could be rejected for any reason. So, there, this isn't a bid process where we accept the highest bidder and we're, that's it, you know, or if it was something we were buying, we would accept the lowest bid, and state law would require us to do this. This is not that sort of process. You know, you could end up with something that, a proposal that, three or four proposals, and one of them looks better than the others, but if it still doesn't meet the commission's expectations, you could reject all of them in this process.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that our public understands that. Thanks.
I guess from my perspective, I really appreciate what you've put together, it looks great to me, and if we need to take a little more time to make sure we've done all the research necessary, that's fine, but from my perspective, I'm fine with proceeding down this path.
I would agree with Nathan that it, you know, it looks, in my mind, looks good, and, you know, if we do get proposals that we don't like, maybe we revisit at that time to change language to, that we've discovered things that, okay, maybe this should be included in the not included list. So, I would say, continue down the path as well.
I think one of the things that staff would like to do is have a little bit of time to put together a little marketing piece, for lack of a better terminology, so that we can put together a little bit of a, of a visual, and also some information. Certainly, there could be development interest from outside of our area, and to give them a little understanding of our community and what's surrounding there, as well as information about our market. So, you know, to give us a little bit of time on that before we start, I mean, maybe we can, you know, start talking a little more that we're, this is going to be released, but give us a little time to put something together and show that to you all before we move ahead. Dave, am I correct in kind of talking about that?
Yeah, that makes sense, and that, that can occur with this, you know, these several extra weeks that we're going to be working through the, any other title information we can find. I think those things can happen concurrently, but that, I think that's, that all makes sense, that those things can all kind of happen over the next several weeks here, and then we would come back to, and if you have, if any individual commissioner has notices something in the document that they think should be adjusted, the next time you see this would be the time that we can include some of those comments also as possibilities, so.
Should the commission approve this tonight? Would staff feel comfortable, perhaps sooner rather than later, even putting up signage on the property? We're talking about thousands and thousands of vehicles that go up and down Broadway every day, but would there be any reason not to already start just marketing right there with some signage to contact? Dave Mingo, the Office of Community and Economic Development.
Dave would like it to be a whip, a whip banner as well, one of those inflatable, inflatable air puppets, in his likeness.
So, my, just my instinct at this point is saying, give us two more weeks to keep working on the title stuff, if you'd be so kind. And I'm very sure that we have a path, but we discovered a new source of information here in the last few days, and what we've mined from that source of information so far still makes me very sure we have a path, but I need a little more time to dig through that, and I'm going to have, request the city attorney to dig through some of that also, just to be sure. So, if you want to see a revisiting of this on October 11th, is that right? On the October 11th agenda, at that point in time, to start with inappropriate sign, no, with the, with the advertising or some very basic marketing component, again, like City Manager says, we, if we're going to do this, my, my recommendation would be to do it professionally and, you know, market it beyond just within the confines of our community, but see what the world can bring to us for this site.
You're not looking for a motion tonight, you're just looking for consensus that you're on the right path?
That's correct.
Or any obvious things that you saw in this document that you just go, wait, timeout, that's got to go a different direction?
Any more commission discussion? All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for your continued work on this. Number eight under new business is Consideration Memorandum 21-206 regarding change order number one, final project acceptance and final payment for the Spruce Street project. So, this change order was in the amount of $12,491.36, in addition to what we originally thought it would be, and then the final project cost will be $486,642.3. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item?
I've got a quick question on this. In the, in the memorandum, it's got masonry components receiving $24,105.71, is, it was, it was D and G, D and G construction as the general on this, is that correct?
I believe so, but Adam, would you like to address that for me, please?
Yes, that's an error in the memo.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Shram.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. There's no other business on tonight's agenda, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.